Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is a Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, May 23rd, 2024. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Miskman?
Here.
Mayor Abu Wasli?
Here.
Ms. Menser?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Mr. Sterned?
Here.
Thank you. It's time we have a moment of silence. Thank you. First on the agenda, we have two proclamations. The first one is for Public Works Week. I've asked the Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem Menser, to read that proclamation. It'll be accepted by Mike Barcalo, our city engineer.
Okay. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Marion. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our residents. And whereas it is in the public interest for the residents, civic leaders, and children in Marion to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore I, Sarah Menser, on behalf of Nicholas Abu Wasli, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby designate the week, May 19th through the 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week. I urge all residents to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life for all.
No, they don't need to hear me. Do you have a speech prepared, Mike? No? Our next proclamation is for Mental Health Awareness Month, and I've asked Councilmember Ms. Skimmon to read that one. We have some guests with Foundation Two to accept that. Please come forward. Yeah. Thank you.
If you didn't already know, May is Mental Health Month, so we have this proclamation. Whereas, May is known as Mental Health Month, and Foundation Two Crisis Services and the Lynn County Mental Health Access Center encourage the prominent visibility of mental health concerns and services in our community to de-stigmatize the conversation and connect people with appropriate support services. And whereas, one in five American adults experiences a mental health condition each year, and everyone faces challenges in life that can impact their mental health. And whereas, despite its prevalence, mental health remains shrouded in stigma, preventing many from seeking support. And whereas, early intervention and access to quality care are crucial for managing mental health conditions and improving quality of life. And whereas, we encourage all residents to take the time to understand the importance of mental health education and recognize taking care of ourselves and others includes taking care of mental health. Now therefore, I engage Ms. Skimmon on behalf of Nicholas Abu Wasli, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2024, as Mental Health Awareness Month, and urge our residents and agencies to recognize the importance of mental health education, advocacy, and support.
Would you like to say something?
Yeah. You can be on the side.
You're welcome to make some comments if you'd like. There you go.
My name is Jenna Shonifer. I'm with Foundation Two Crisis Services. I also live in Marion. Just want to say, we honor, we thank this very much. Even though May is Mental Health Awareness Month, it is a need that we have every single day. Our crisis center is receiving over 12,000 contacts every single month. So that's 12,000 times Iowans reach out for support, including friends, neighbors, coworkers here in Marion. We're in the schools, we're at the police department, we're responding to residents when they are in need. And having this kind of support just makes it all that more effective and helpful for people when they are in crisis. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your partnership with the police department. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a presentation from the Lynn County Mental Health Access Center and Foundation Two Crisis Services. Ryan? Are you introducing? Okay, well, I'm sorry, it said that here. Erin Foster and Kelly Zapata?
Rochelle Lopec. I am a law enforcement liaison with the Marion Police Department.
Okay, welcome.
We have the presentation. Got it. There we go. I'm Erin Foster. I'm the Director of the Lynn County Mental Health Access Center. I brought Rochelle here, and she'll talk about the liaison program and the connection to the access center in just a second. Very basic information about the access center. We are located in the northwest quadrant of Cedar Rapids. If you're familiar where the old public health building was before they built the new one, that's where we're located. Nestled in between Roosevelt Middle School and Abbey Community Mental Health Center. Our hours are very easy to remember. We're open 24/7. Crisis does not occur as a Monday through Friday, 9 to 5 thing. And so we need to be available 24/7. Our phone number is listed there as 892-5612. Just to make a note to that phone number, it actually is a Foundation Two Crisis Counselor who answers the phone for us. So it's not a receptionist or anyone right there. If you were to make a phone call to us, you would get a Foundation Two Crisis Counselor. What we stand for and what we do, our ultimate goal is to provide 24/7 high-quality crisis care to individuals who needs it. We do this by doing a variety of different things. We follow the best practice focus, regardless of what type of service anyone is getting into the access center. I'll discuss who all is involved with us in a second here, but every one of us have licensing that we abide to, accreditation that we abide to. And then ultimately, we're also overseen by the state. And so there's lots of checks and balances at the access center to make sure that we're doing the best that we possibly can according to evidence-based practices. We're very comprehensive and know that an individual who walks in to the access center may be experiencing a crisis, but there may be a lot of other factors at play. And we look at every one of them when we're working to work with the individual. We are extremely recovery-oriented, but that also means we don't define what that is for you. We're not here to define your crisis. We're also not here to define what recovery and the aftermath looks like. Extremely person-centered. We are here for urgent and crisis situations. So we are very early on in the continuum, and we do not function as well as we do without the collaboration of a lot of really strong key stakeholders. I'll talk about the individual organizations that physically live in the building with us. But beyond that, we realize crisis doesn't exist in a vacuum, and there needs to be a variety of other people at the table with us. And we've brought a lot of people along with us. So who is physically in the access center? I mentioned that I work for Lynn County, but I'm the only Lynn County employee there, which makes it a very interesting model to follow. Lynn County has the oversight of the building, the budget, the designation, all of the kind of upper-level type of things that happen. But we are not there doing the work that these amazing providers in front of you are doing. So Foundation Two is there, Abbey Health, Abbey Community Mental Health Center, Unity Point Chemical Dependency, and Area Ambulance, all moved into one building with us. So there's a lot of moving pieces. Every once in a while, I get told I act more like a middle school principal than actually an administrator with that. Because you can imagine, there's a variety of different things that show up at our front door, and we do have to work together to make it work out. So it's a really good family atmosphere about 97% of the time. Who can't we serve? When the state mandated access centers, they did put a no eject, no reject rule on us, meaning everybody who walks into the door, we have to be able to do something for them. Except, we did get to write a few admission criterias for those who we can serve. And I'm going to jump around on this list just a little bit, kind of starting with the easiest. We are adults only. Do I think that this needs to happen and should happen across not only our community but the nation for youth? Yes, I think that's coming. I think the ability for the state right now to handle a crisis system like this, the strength isn't there. Do I think the realignment of mental health will help with that? Yes. But currently, at the access center, we are for adults only. The top one there, individuals need to not be in immediate medical care. Although we have area ambulance there 24/7, and we have nurses there. If someone truly does have a medical emergency, they do need to go to the emergency room. Now, we have amazing partnerships with the emergency rooms here locally. So if someone comes in, and once they have been treated for whatever physical ailment is happening, a lot of times the ERs do send them to us. So it's a little longer way to get there, but we don't have the facilities to really take on physical medical emergencies. The second bullet there is the one that gets a little murky. Ultimately, it's saying it has to be safe for every one of us to be in that building. It has to be safe for the patients to come in. It has to be safe for the staff to be there. It has to be safe for everybody, which means a cutie level of people coming in needs to be safe with us. We do a lot of screenings and can figure out a lot of different things about individuals. But ultimately, if someone is too acute for our services, they do need to go to the hospital, and we have to take them there. The other piece, when it comes to being violent or the fact that we can't de-escalate individuals, if you cannot de-escalate to the point in which, again, it's safe for everyone to be there, the access center is not a place for you. Now with that being said, there has been very few circumstances where we've had to send people away for those reasons. Our biggest de-escalation tactic is we are 100% voluntary. So it's really hard to stay escalated in a place you don't have to stay. And so a lot of times, the conversation really is around that. You don't have to be here. We really wish you would stay with us. Sometimes it's physically showing people that they can get out, that the doors do not lock behind them. And the de-escalation happens pretty simply just with that. So those technically are three types of people, if you will, that we can't serve at the access center. So general snapshot of numbers for us, I pulled quarter three and then year-to-date for this year. Walk-ins are indicating individuals just literally walked into our front door. We also take a lot of referrals from law enforcement and EMS. We, as the access center locally and access centers across the state, act as very high or have very high diversion rates for both the ER and the jail settings. And so these two entities here locally really do make a lot of referrals. Although we're a Lynn County access center and a regional access center, we do not turn people away according to where they live. And so this just indicates the number of counties in which we've received patients from. We're also up to four different states, Midwest states for the most part, of individuals that we've received. So I thought you'd be interested perhaps in Marion's numbers. So this is actually looking from November 1 of 2022, when actually we started our new electronic health record system. So that's why it seems like kind of an odd date. Up until May 14th, we've had 149 individuals from Marion just walk into our doors and 34 from law enforcement. There's an asterisk there because we count law enforcement referrals as just those coming in with law enforcement. It does not count anything Rochelle has done. And she will talk about her program in a second. So I didn't want to make it look like I was throwing legal enforcement under the bus. I'm not. They've been very supportive of this program. But this is kind of the odd situations in which Rochelle hasn't brought someone, and they've just come in with law enforcement in general. Primary issues coming from Marion, it's overwhelmingly just in general, mental health issues. We do have a few substance use issues and other. There can be a lot of other things that bring people into the access center. So I just did a quick snapshot of kind of what that looks like. Demographics are broken down there for you. The ages also broken down. Again, remembering, these are just individuals with that Marion zip code. Law enforcement and EMS referrals have been a really big thing for us since we've opened. We realized we're battling history when it comes with working with law enforcement and EMS to make referrals to a place other than the emergency room in jail. So we needed to make it as efficient and effective as possible. So the turnaround time in which law enforcement or EMS bring individuals to us is three and a half minutes, meaning they spend three and a half minutes literally in the access center before they're back out on the street. I thought five minutes was fast. I joked with law enforcement that I wasn't sure I could get it lower than five minutes, and they proved me wrong with that. So three and a half minutes is pretty quick to get back out there. These points, the 37 and the 33 that come from are Marion data. So 37% of the people who came to us from Marion would have gone to jail if they did not come from us, and 33% of them would have gone to the hospital. We collect that data in a variety of different ways, but ultimately, a lot of it is self-disclosure. So they would have integrated with law enforcement, or they would have themselves either taken themselves to the hospital or called 911 in general. So now I'm going to let Rochelle talk about her program.
So I'm Rochelle. I am a law enforcement liaison with the Marion Police Department and Foundation Two. My office is actually in the PD. We're Chapter 24 compliant. So essentially, what that means is, let's say, I have a client who comes in who is essentially in a crisis and needs to utilize the access center. I can call down there, and I can actually place them myself versus I'm having to walk in, get triaged. I just call down, hey, I have a client who could really use your services. Can I bring them in? A lot of us are cross-trained, so I could go down and work at the access center as a crisis counselor, or I can do my job at the Marion PD. We take a ton of trainings. I think I have probably 185 hours in training for mental health, substance use, suicide prevention, youth mental health first aid, as we're seeing a lot of youth are struggling with mental health concerns as well. When I was hired, I went through the interview process not just with Foundation Two, but also with the officers. So I sat in sergeant, lieutenant, investigator. So they kind of collaborated on to make sure that I was a good fit for the PD as well as Foundation Two, since I'm working directly with the officers. So with that being said, I have a supervisor at the PD, and I have a supervisor at Foundation Two, and they often talk, see how things are going, making sure I'm meeting the needs of both Foundation Two and with the law enforcement officers. Usually, I do a lot of just general mental health tasks, whether it's co-responsing with the officers. Usually, if we get a dispatch call out, I will directly dispatch with them, typically wait for them to clear the seat and let me know it's safe for me to go in. And then I'll usually meet with my clients. Sometimes there are some situations where I'm not working, and the officers feel like this person really could use my assistance. So I will give them a call, see if I can meet with them. And sometimes it doesn't require an officer to go with me if they feel it's a safe situation for me to go. They still kind of remain in the area should anything kind of turn south. We have liaisons. I'm in Marion. We have one that oversees Lynn County. We have two in Cedar Rapids, and their model is a little bit different. So they respond with one officer only. There is one mental health officer. I think they're working on getting a second one, whereas I respond with any and every officer in the PD. We have one in Dubuque County. We have one in Dubuque City, Buchanan County, Delaware County, and Benton County. And I think we're looking to expand. Essentially, Cedar Rapids is the only one that does it that way. Depending on how you look at it, some people say that the one-on-one is a little bit more effective versus me responding with all the officers. I feel like, I think it just depends on the individual and kind of how they work best. Like I said, I get them from overnight, day shifts. I'll even have sometimes the fire department will reach out to me. I've had the city reach out to me as well to help with like hoarding situations, just kind of things that aren't typical that would require law enforcement interaction. So I kind of do a lot, anywhere from DHS removals. Sometimes I will help the SROs if they have a kiddo that's kind of escalated. I think sometimes kiddos can get a little scared when it's officers. They're afraid they're going to go to jail. They're afraid something else is going to happen. So I kind of act as that bridge, to bridge that gap with the individuals and the officers. I help support not only my department with Foundation Two, but also my officers. I let them know, you know, hey, I'm here for you guys as well. I can help with evictions, sometimes transportation. Sometimes it's just our clients don't necessarily know where to go or how to do the paperwork. So that's when I kind of step in. Hey, I can help you fill out this application. I can help you get this referral. And I do a lot of referrals to like Heritage, to Abbey, to Cedar Center, to Guideling, things like that. And sometimes it's just simply people are just escalated, kind of not getting along. So I will go out to the house, kind of talk about what's going on, and try to help them find a solution to de-escalate what is currently happening. And we also do have a co-responder care coordinator. Essentially, she serves Lynn County. So if it is a caseload where it's going to require a little bit more intensive one-on-one work, I can often refer to her as well that can see the more long-term just because, you know, mental health crises are on the rise, substance use. And sometimes I don't necessarily have the availability to see it through if it's going to take a couple weeks to get them completely stabilized. So she's kind of a tool in my tool belt as well.
So we, one, just wanted to thank you again for the proclamation. It obviously means a big deal when cities support mental health services and that type of thing. But then just wanted to offer a time for you to see what we're doing specifically Lynn County and what Rochelle is doing, and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Questions? Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, so I mean, it's been my understanding over the last several years, there has been a shortage of professionals to assist in the mental health area, whether it's at the council level or psychologists with PhDs. So is that trend improving at all? And how does that impact the services that Foundation Two can provide?
Want me to take it? Yeah, it absolutely impacts us. Actually, the shortage in individuals who work in crisis care is the reason we didn't go 24/7 until this December. So we've been open since March of 2021. Staffing and all of the things coming together, the workforce is the reason it didn't happen. Crisis work in general, it's a niche-type work. It's not someone where we can just put anyone in a seat to answer the phone or to be there to talk to people. It is a specialty. With it being a specialty, I won't get into the weeds with this too, it's not reimbursed like a specialty. So until we really work on increasing the reimbursement rate in which the individuals get paid to see people in crisis or to see people and that type of thing, the workforce shortage in this area is going to continue. This was a pre-COVID issue. This really didn't have a lot to do with COVID. We saw this beforehand. And so you never want to take the credit away and just put it on a business model. But it's a business model specifically in the state of Iowa that's really difficult to figure out. So yes, it still impacts us. Yes, it still impacts the time in which we can even get people connected to things like prescribers and that type of thing. We have a few ins, we have a few things we can pull when we really need to, but the shortage is everywhere. And it's really in every aspect of the mental health world. The counselors, the prescribers, the therapist, all of it is being impacted by.
The other comment I will make is having Rochelle and Foundation Two as a liaison has been a tremendous asset for the city and the police department. So that's, I hope we continue that for a very long time. That's been very well-received and very well-needed. Thank you.
Yeah, well, first of all, thank you both for your work and for being here tonight. And also, Erin, thank you for the, I think, like, I don't know, three or four tours I've done at the access center between, I guess, that days when it was opening and now. My question, and I know I've asked you this in the past, Erin, but I kind of forgot what the answer was. In terms of talks for the future and like options for children and youth, kind of where are those discussions in the community? Has the most recent signing of the bill kind of impacted what the future could look like there?
So probably about a year and a half ago, Lynn County actually led some strategic planning about, okay, we have this model, we did this, we have this building standing up now. How do we mirror it for youth? And we brought together a lot of the youth-serving organizations, including organizations like Foundation Two that will obviously have an impact on it, and thought about like, what are the differences that we have in the adult model that's, you know, different than the children's model? And who can lead it and who can do all these different things? So this must have been about fall of 2022, where all of us are kind of starting to come out of post-COVID-type work. And ultimately, it came down to lack of capacity. Like what organization, even if it's Lynn County who kind of took it over like they did with the Adult Access Center, you still need the organizations that are willing to take on this extra thing that's also new. And you're, it's a lot harder to pave the way than to drive on the road that's already been paved. And so at the time, it was a capacity issue with a lot of the organizations to say, we just, we cannot possibly take on this extra project. So strategic planning is done with it. I know there's organizations that are willing to do the work with it. And to me, it was just the lack of one organization to step up and say that they would do it. And then to go to your question, then, how do the funds follow it? Because we are also, like I said, a year and a half, and we have fought for every dollar that has come into the access center to actually get to a point in which we can function as we normally do. And again, the, you know, children's mental health system is not built up like the adult one is. So again, do I think this realignment will help with that? And redistricting and all the things that's going to happen at the state level? Maybe. I think Lynn County is in a really good spot of when these things start to settle a little bit, that they have a framework to do it. I do think that they would lead the state again in doing something like that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, thank you so much for coming in and updating us and for all the work that you do in the community and the region and the impact you have specifically on our work as a city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, we have a special guest with us today, Mr. Clark McLeod. And our city arborist, Mike Semperich, has a presentation to make. I'll come down front.
It's less of a presentation, excuse me, and more of an introduction. My name is Mike Semperich. I'm the arborist with Marion Parks Department. I want to thank the council for taking some time in the agenda tonight to allow us to make this acknowledgement. It's my pleasure to be here and to introduce and recognize Clark McLeod and, more importantly, Monarch Research Project. They've been a longtime partner with Marion here, and we've worked towards bringing, providing, restoring and establishing native prairie as well as native tree plantings in the community. And last fall, we, because of the success we've had with the programs through Monarch Research, we wanted to nominate them for a few awards. And because of the merit of their program and the strength of our partnership working with them, we've been able, or they were, they were selected and acknowledged for those awards this spring. The two awards that they were, or that they did receive were the, through the organization, the Iowa Parks and Rec Association, and they received the Service Club Award for that program. And then the secondary was the Iowa Urban Tree Council, and they received an outstanding local partner award for that, through that program. Both of the award ceremonies were held out of town, and so Clark, with his busy schedule, was not able to attend those, but we had staff and representatives from Monarch Research there. But because Clark and Monarch Research is a local organization and such a good partner, we wanted to take time tonight to acknowledge and recognize them here with the city council. And so if I could, I'd like to bring Clark up for a photo opportunity and some few, a few words if he would like.
Photo first or talk?
What's your preference?
Go ahead. No, 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 you don't have to stand up. Well, we were shocked when we got notified by Mike that we won statewide awards because we're not statewide, for sure. Lynn County is the only place we operate in, only because there's so much work to do in Lynn County that there's no way we can even think about spreading to surrounding counties. We think that local model is the model that can work versus trying to see how much geography we can cover. And so in this case, having Marion as a partner was really nice because when we started, we didn't start with the cities in our program. We started with employers. Because the challenge was that we had to get trees out to the community quickly. And the reason we had to is a good number of the nurseries in our communities and the large box stores that sell trees don't sell native trees. And we lost native trees. We lost the big guys, all of the native trees that have been supporting our ecosystem. So we went into high gear within 30 days of the Duray Show and piloted our program with six companies. So we started working with employers versus cities, hospitals and schools, but Marion was the first city to sign up, okay? So not only were we aligned perfectly with the trees, but Mike has been super-partner for us to work with. And, you know, sometimes when you go into government, you, you know, you don't have a real good team partner, and we have with Marion and Marianne Nick. So what's going to happen in the future? Well, because of partners like Marion, this fall, we'll be celebrating the approach of 100,000 trees planted in four years. And we want to burn right by that, of course, but 100,000 trees is a lot of trees. And so that's almost a tree for every two people in Lynn County. And, and we went into high gear. Those are all native trees. The state of Iowa, before it became a state and inhabited, had 50% oak trees of different species. And the mix of those 100,000 trees includes about 50% oak trees. And oak is the keystone tree of Iowa as well as the state tree. So I'm not going to spend a lot more time, but we are now moving to a once-a-year program. It'll be in the fall, and we'll want you to declare the month of October, Tree Planting Month. And that's the best month for everyone to plant, and we're going to increase the number of trees. And starting this fall, we're just a little under 20,000 trees for this, this fall planting. We're going to want to do another 20,000 each fall. In the springtime, we're introducing a brand-new program that we introduced last Sunday, which will start helping homeowners with the plantings of their gardens and their shrubbery. Because again, when we go out to many of the nurseries, you don't even know if you're getting native plants. So we're going to make sure native flowers, native host plants, native woody material will all be available to Marion and the other communities. So we love Marion as a partner, and I want to thank our donors who make these trees available at no cost to the city. I think we did about 60% of the trees, and Mike has put in between 5,000 and 6,000 trees in Marion, so that's very exciting.
Yeah, I missed one of my talking points, but we've planted 6,000 trees since the Duray Show in 2020, and over 3,000 of those trees were Monarch Research trees. And then we also maintain and manage over 100 acres of pollinator-zoned prairie here in Marion.
And our overall Lynn County prairie is approaching 1,300 acres now. So it's pretty impressive, and plus, we've been putting in, we put in 1,000 miles of mini prairies in the right-of-way of the Lynn County road system. That's been planted by us. Normally, we don't plant anything, but this roadside ditches are very difficult to work in, and so we've chosen to do that. Otherwise, everyone does the planting, we do a little bit to stimulate it.
Great partnership.
Thanks to Marion.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. McLeod, and I just, I just want to just acknowledge what a great partner you have been. I remember getting the first call from you about Marion joining you and your vision. And your leadership is just tremendous, and we're grateful for your leadership on this, on these very important issues. And the impact that you're making, the true impact that we felt generations from now. But to see that, that far into the future and to want to make that, that impact well beyond the existence of any of us in this room, I think says a lot about you and the generosity of your organization and your donors, and we couldn't ask for better partners. So thank you. We're very grateful.
Thank you.
The next item is a public forum. I would like to just remind our audience of the public forum rules and procedures. Our first public forum is set aside for comments from the public on any item on the agenda, but not part of a public hearing. At the end of the meeting, there will be a second public forum for comments from members of the public on any topic. And then during the public hearings, there will be time associated, set aside as part of the public hearing for comments on that topic. Anyone addressing the city council should please complete a yellow card at the end of the staff table. Please do not approach the dais and submit any materials that are being submitted to the city clerk and not to the council. Once you're called forward, please step up to the podium and please state your name and address. Speakers should limit their comments to five minutes. Speakers should be respectful of all people in the, in the room. Please keep your comments specific to the topic of concern and refrain from disparaging any individual person. Speakers should not engage in conduct or speech that is threatening or inciting violence or obscene. And please avoid repeating comments made by other individuals. And please adhere to the guidelines, or it may result in removal from the meeting. So at this time, we have the first public forum, which is a time for comments from members of the public on any topic listed on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. Does anyone here to address council, please come forward. Okay, seeing no one's coming forward, we'll close this part of the meeting. Proceed to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through E1, Resolutions 31927 through 31934.
Second. We moved in second to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through E1, Resolutions 31927 through 31934. Discussion? Hey, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. For the next section of the agenda, I will turn over the meeting to Mayor Protem Mansour.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abalas's abstention as follows. This will be item F1, Resolution Number 31935.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abalasly's abstention, which is item F1, Resolution 31935. Moved in seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carried with one abstention.
Next item is a public hearing on a proposed adoption of a budget amendment to the 2023-2024 fiscal year budget. Leah, do you have a presentation?
Thank you. The state does require that the city would do an amendment before going over in any function. The functions and the changes are displayed there on the screen. I will highlight the larger ones. Under public safety, the automated traffic enforcement program was unanticipated and not planned for at the time of budget. That amended in 700,000 in revenue and 300,000 in expenditure. And then also under public safety, the radio equipment was a carryover from the prior fiscal year in the amount of $412,000. And by carryover, I mean it was anticipated that we would pay for that equipment in fiscal year 2022-2023, but didn't actually pay for it until 2023-2024. I'm only going to touch the big ones. Culture and Recreation was primarily an equipment carryover. Under general government, the large revenue was interest revenue, as we did not anticipate rates to stay where they are at. Under debt service, we had made a strategic move with our general obligation bond series 2023 B and C, where we opted not to capitalize an interest payment. Under Public Works, this has to do with the timing of payment of plow trucks. And then under Business Type, it's really related to capital improvement program projects, specifically related to the Public Services Facility, the Trunk Sewer Project, and the Solid Waste Fleet, and just timing of payment.
Okay. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone here to address council with regard to this measure? Please come forward. Last of staff, if any comments have been received outside the meeting?
No. I have not received any.
Okay, please note that for the record. We'll close the public hearing and proceed to the resolution.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 31936, approving fiscal year 2023-2024 budget amendment.
Second. We moved in seconded to approve Resolution Number 31936, approving the budget amendment for the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. Discussion? Okay, seeing there's no discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 31936, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your honor, I move to approve ordinance number 24-07, amending sections 313-12.1B and 313-12.4C and 313-12.5A of the Marion Code of ordinances regarding automated traffic enforcement, and this is our initial consideration.
Second. We moved in seconded to approve ordinance number 24-07, amending sections, section 313-12.1B, 313-12.4C and 313-12.5A of the Code of ordinances regarding automated traffic enforcement. We'll just note that this is to comply with the recently adopted legislation. Any discussion on this matter? Okay, all those in favor of the first consideration, initial consideration of ordinance number 24-07, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to suspend the rules and proceed to the second consideration of ordinance number 24-07 regarding amendments to Chapter 313 of the Marion Code of ordinances regarding automated traffic enforcement.
Second. We moved in seconded to suspend the rules and proceed to the second consideration of ordinance number 24-07. Discussion on suspending the rules?
Your honor.
Sir?
Yes, so just to repeat what the mayor had said previously, this is to bring us in to compliance with the recently passed legislation by the legislature.
Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? All those in favor of suspending the rules and proceeding to the second consideration of ordinance number 24-07, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 24-07, amending sections 313-12.1B, 313-12.4C and 313-12.5A of the Marion Code of ordinances regarding automated traffic enforcement, second consideration.
Second. We moved in seconded to approve the second consideration of ordinance number 24-07. Any discussion on approving ordinance number 24-07? Hey, all those in favor of the motion to approve ordinance number 24-07, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to suspend the rules and proceed to the final consideration of ordinance number 24-07 regarding amendments to Chapter 313 of the Marion Code of ordinances regarding automated traffic enforcement.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to suspend the rules and proceed to the final consideration of ordinance number 24-07. Discussion on suspending the rules? Yeah, I would just note that it's not typical that we would have all three readings in a meeting, but this, since this is to be in compliance with the new legislation, that we felt that was justified. Okay? All those in favor of the motion to suspend the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 24-07, amending sections 313-12.1B, 313-12.4C and 313-12.5A of the Marion Code of ordinances regarding automated traffic enforcement for final consideration.
Second. We moved in seconded to approve the final consideration of ordinance number 24-07. Discussion? All those in favor of approving the final consideration of ordinance number 24-07, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. At this time, we have a public comment period regarding the addition of no parking signage within Area 2, which is specifically property located westerly of 10th Street, northerly of 9th Avenue, and bound by Indian Creek. So the public comment period is, is open, and I'll have a presentation from the city engineer.
Yeah, so I'll be real quick on this. Basically, this is the second area that we've done with the new model of bringing streets into compliance. So if a street was built today, it's built 26-foot-wide street in a residential neighborhood, and that's parking on one side. So some of these streets vary from 20 to 28-foot wide. So those that meet SUDAS requirements, we're allowing to park on one side. Those that don't, we actually are recommending not parking on either side. So we're just taking this area by area. So this is not only for public service, for garbage, snow removal, fire apparatus response time, and so we're just making the city more in compliance as we go. So this went out to 380 residents, and I know we have a pile of resident comments that we've received, and I don't know if there's anybody here to speak as well.
Thank you, Mike. If anyone here is here to address the council on this measure, please step forward. Okay, seeing no one's coming forward, we'll close the public comment period, and we'll ask if we received any comments.
We have received several comments. Lorraine Longwell does not agree to no parking on both sides of 12th Avenue. Jeff and Pat McGowan oppose to no parking on both sides of 12th Avenue. Chuck Crumbah in support of no parking on 13th Avenue and recommends allowance for wider driveways. Brian Gold opposed to no parking on both sides of 15th Avenue and recommends only the north side. Star Horrock opposed to no parking on north side of 16th Avenue, recommends the south side instead. Matt Proctor does not agree to no parking on both sides of 17th Avenue, recommends only on the south side, and then a no parking here to corner on the north side. Larry Van Dusen shared concerns of why Willow Park Court is included as its privately-owned street. Andrew Cruz recommends no parking signs on the east side rather than the west side of 5th Street. Christopher and Christie Knight does not agree with a no parking on 6th Street. Paulette Boquist agrees with parking changes, but questioned why recommendation is to allow parking on the same side as fire hydrants on 8th and 9th Street. Trevor McKern would like to change the no parking from the west side of 9th Street to the east side. Matthew Meyer is opposed to all the changes. And then there was one that went to a spam folder. That's from Jack and Doreen Zumwalt. Support the change on 8th Street and opposition of the change on 15th Avenue. Support the change on Eighth Street and and opposition of the change on Fifteenth Avenue.
Hey. Do you receive any comments outside of those, Mike?
Rachel got all my comments.
Okay. All right, please note all those in the record and we will uh we'll proceed to the motion.
Your honor, I move to receive and file traffic advisory committee report regarding the addition of no parking signage within area two. More specifically, property located westerly of Tenth Street, northerly of Ninth Avenue and bound by Indian Creek.
Second.
Been moved in seconded to receive and file a traffic advisory committee report regarding the addition of no parking signage within area two. Okay, uh discussion on receiving and filing the report. So this is just to receive and file. We're not making any decision.
No, that's the next item, but if there's a part of the report that you would like to talk about, we can.
So. Receive and file? Any comments? All right, all those in favor of the motion to receive and file the report of the traffic advisory committee on the no parking signage within area two, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Mr. Miss Kimmin.
I move to approve project calendar. Whoops, yep, sorry. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve project calendar regarding the following no parking areas within area two and directing public service staff to install signage. This resolutions number three one nine three seven through three one nine five seven. Do we do that? We'd want to do that till after we read the better read the resolution, the original papers.
You do not have to read all of the resolutions.
Oh.
So. I think it was decided that one of these will be pulled and voted on at a different time. So.
If there's one you want to be pulled, you would need to make a motion to pull that from the project calendar.
Okay, so you've made the full motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded to approve the project calendar regarding no parking areas within area two and directing public services staff to install the signage, which includes resolutions three one nine three seven, three one nine five seven. Uh. Any discussion?
Yes, your honor.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I I would like to pull resolution number three one nine four three. Um and that is a specific one that uh deals with Fifteenth Avenue. Um I want to do a little more research on that. I have talked to a couple of the affected residents who provided comments to us. And I also want to review the policy basis for this, so um yeah, I just want to have a little additional time uh for that particular resolution.
So. He could make an amendment to uh to remove that from the from the resolution.
You would make the the motion you would want to make would be the motion, a motion to remove and table that particular resolution.
All right, I make that at this point then. Okay, I would uh uh move to uh remove and table resolution number thirty thirty-one nine forty-three uh from uh the uh from this particular motion.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in seconded to remove and table resolution number three one nine four three from the motion to approve the project calendar for area two parking. Uh. Any discussion on removing and tabling resolution three one nine four three?
Your honor, I would anticipate that um I would, you know, this could be returned to the agenda uh the very next meeting.
Any other discussion on removing and tabling? Okay, all those in favor of removing and tabling resolution number three one nine four three from the motion to approve the project calendar as presented for the no parking areas within area two, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion is approved. Now the motion reads approving the project calendar regarding the uh no parking areas within area two and directing public service staff to install signage as stated in resolutions three one three nine seven through three one nine four two and three one nine four four through three one nine four not, oh, I'm sorry, three one nine five seven. Okay, so the initial resolution without three one nine four three. Any discussion on that? Steve.
Yeah, I just, so Mike, we obviously had a number of comments related to this area. Uh are there any of those that uh would cause you to agree with any of their comments and or make any changes to what TAC has uh provided in front of us?
So a lot of the individuals, um you didn't see my responses, but most of those other than ones that just received today uh got responses and some of them weren't quite understanding of it. So for example, one of them that we got was they didn't like the no parking north of central, but they actually lived in south of central. So they didn't quite understand. And so explaining that through the the process, some of those comments went away. We still have to in include them as part of the public comment. As far as parking on one side versus the other, what we do is we take drive the driveways, mailboxes, fire hydrants, all that into account. And we're going to leave the side of the street that has the most available parking when we're done. So it might be the side that has the fire hydrants, but when you look at how long these streets are north, south, maybe the fire hydrants are on the east side on on south, say, south of central, but on the west side, north of central, but we want to try and make that continuous. So. Yeah, it might be that there's allowable parking on the side that has the fire hydrants, but you're also not allowed to park in front of the fire hydrants.
So what is the average width of the streets? I mean, this is an older part of town. So what is the average width of these streets? Because the normal, the new streets today, you said, are twenty-six feet. So what is the average width of these streets?
Have to run the math on the in the packet. We did include the street widths on all of them on the map and showed with the recommendations of of each. But I did not run what the average width was, but it would be between twenty foot and twenty-eight.
Okay.
There, go ahead.
This is just kind of more of a clarification for people who may be watching or following this project who are coming into it at this point. But um a reminder that this is part of a citywide initiative moving forward and it has to do with emergency vehicle access on a lot of these streets as well because of issues we've run into. So some of these that are proposed, it is there's no parking on either side of the street. What is it that narrow of a street or what was that? That was that it's?
Yeah, so to remind counsel, I believe it was last year, um we brought a a policy to city council for approval. Um and so we had different ramifications because what we looked at is in the old part of town, there are a lot of streets that are narrower than twenty-six. They even go down to eighteen and nineteen foot wide. Um and so in those cases, we looked and there were some areas that there was going to be five blocks of no parking if you didn't have a driveway. And in those old parts of town, there are areas that have no driveways. And so we basically wrote some criteria as part of that policy for existing streets so that it doesn't imply it's any new subdivisions that come into play. It's only the existing streets. Um and so with that, if it was twenty foot or narrower because of the size of the apparatus, we said no parking.
Are there such streets that don't have driveways too?
If not in this case, but when we get to some of those future areas and we do the actual uptown downtown area and the old part of Marion, yes. So there's going to be certain streets that it's going to be harder for those individuals to park, so it is going to be a tough conversation to have. But we want to be consistent as we move forward.
So that's the difference in some of these and the comments we were receiving comes from the fact that some of the streets, the different sizes that you have no parking on either side. Again, just kind of clarifying for those who are.
Yeah, if if all the streets were twenty-six foot wide, we'd have parking at least on one side of the street on all the streets. But unfortunately, when they're only twenty foot wide, that that limits, and it's not only fire. We're picking up garbage with automated trucks now, snow plows. There's a lot of reasons for that. And unfortunately, that's the old part of town. That's how it was built, so.
What about the comment about the private street?
Uh so the private street, we did have Lynch Dallas look into that. Uh we do pick up garbage on that street and we do provide fire and police service on that street. So an example today, as Rookwood East is developing, they're actually building twenty-foot alleys there. Even though that's a private street, we say no parking on both sides. So we do have that regulation to do that. I realize that they don't plow that street, but that's the same thing with the private streets and the new development. Um so there are still those private streets out there, so.
And what about the comment um asking for wider driveways in the alternative?
Those those probably were ones that were today that came out, so those people I'll reply to. Um so we do have regulations. If you have a two, one or two stall garage, you can actually have a twenty-four foot wide driveway. If you have a three stall, you can go up to thirty-six. Um so that's something I'll reach out to that person. I'll see how wide their driveway is and that might be an option for them to make a wider driveway. It would come at their expense, but not saying that that can't be a special exception. I know there's also one that was asking for an ADA accessible parking spot on every street. Um and that one also be one that I follow up because we do have the on-street ADA parking as well.
Other questions or comments?
Not asked.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the project calendar for the no parking areas within area two including resolutions three one three nine seven through three one nine four two, three one nine four four through three one nine five seven. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. Thank you, Mike. The next item is a public hearing regarding the Cedar Rapids Marion twenty-eight E annexation agreement. The property located north of East Robbins Road to the Marion Otter Creek Township border, North Albernet Road. Hi, Dave.
Okay, uh yes, this is a uh public hearing regarding the proposed annexation agreement with Cedar Rapids. Uh this is really a renewal uh and a slight amendment to our agreement that we are uh just recently expired on. Uh this establishes a annexation boundary between the two communities, Cedar Rapids being um area A, city of Marion being area B. Uh you can kind of hardly see on the screen with the black line that runs north, south. Uh to the middle of the image is the annexation boundary. Uh it extends from East Robbins Road um and then it eventually ties into Albernet Road and then north to the Otter Creek Township, which is about a half mile north of White Pole Road is where the current boundary terminates. Um along with this agreement, uh it sets up additional provisions for the cities to discuss our watershed management agreements, sanitary sewer improvements and discuss some additional future boundary adjustments uh on the southwest corner of Marion uh due to some serviceability um concerns that both communities have in that area. Uh this agreement will be for a period of ten years. Um and then we'll look again to renew it, hopefully again in ten years, just based on the current factors. Uh so this boundary is really just uh almost identical to the previous one, other than the half mile north. Uh we have resolved or we have annexed some areas in the previous area zone C which is Jacob's Landing, which was the recent Frazier development, uh the very south end. Um we've annexed uh Jacob's Landing area, Todd Frazier's and the uh the neighborhood, the county subdivision to the west will now go to Cedar Rapids. That was a previous uh whoever got there first type of uh uh agreement, uh if whoever either community could take it without any objection from the uh either city. Uh so Marion's taking Jacob's Landing, Cedar Rapids will take the west area of that. Uh other than that, it's a very standard agreement based on uh sewer sewer services, water services, what we can and can't serve. Uh we tried to put that line in a manner that uh is optimized by both cities for services. We are recommending approval.
All right, thank you. Uh this time, the public hearing is open. If anyone is here to address counsel on this measure, please come forward. Do you receive any comments outside the meeting?
I have not received any.
No.
None, okay.
Sorry.
Uh. Then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and proceed to the resolution.
Um your honor, I move to approve resolution number three one nine five eight approving the Cedar Rapids Marion annexation twenty-eight E agreement for property generally located north of East Robbins Road to the Marion Otter Creek Township border at Nor Albernet Road.
Second. Been moved in seconded to approve resolution number three one nine five eight approving the Cedar Rapids Marion annexation twenty-eight E agreement with the city of of Cedar Rapids for pro- property generally located north of East Robbins Road to the Marion Otter Creek Township border at North Albernet Road. Discussion. Go ahead.
Okay, I swear on the previous slide, does it say Boysen Road?
Oops.
Okay.
It does. That was my error. It should be Robbins.
Okay.
On the first.
Sorry, I was a little confused because I'm thinking, I'm looking at this map and it's kind of by where I live.
Created the confusion, sorry.
Okay, okay, so um but then I saw in the resolution, it's East Robbins, Nor. So I just wanted to clarify that. But again, I don't always trust myself when I'm reading, so it could have been me. So it's the East Robbins. That's what I'm thinking is the East Robbins. It's the new development space that we had talked about previously.
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any discussion? Dave, what, just in general, what's the advantage to Marion of having such an agreement? Why isn't it all whoever gets there first?
Uh I mean, it it.
I mean, why do we want to agree on a boundary and limit ourselves? Just just as a as a general matter?
Yeah, from a planning standpoint, I'll I'm going to use the West Des Moines area. When I say West Des Moines, I mean the suburbs of West Des Moines. Uh they have aggressively annexed. Uh you get into areas where you're you're really promoting creating sprawl. Um in what in the West Des Moines metro, they really got into an issue of having to do lift stations to serve sewer. Um they were competitive, that they were challenging each other's annexations. Um it it just wasn't, I'll say it wasn't being neighborly. Um they were, it really, it really promotes sprawl. Uh so you're getting outside of areas you can serve adequately just to gobble up or just take land. Uh so when you have orderly orderly annexation boundaries, uh you you truly look at what can you serve and what can't you serve? And this boundary line really does reflect what we can serve without having to put in lift stations uh larger um uh infrastructure projects. It it really is. It does flow this way, does flow one way. Um it it's just really growth management.
Didn't we have Cedar Rapids um when they annexed the most their most recent area um that's being developed over there? Um didn't they ask us to to tie into our sewer? I mean, so obviously they couldn't service service it, but they got to annex it.
Yeah, that was per the.
So that's kind of contrary to.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, it's okay. I'm just trying to understand like what's what's the advantage to us rather than like maybe we could have annexed that area and we could have serviced it.
Yeah, it's it's an area we could have serviced with sewer, um but they had the infrastructure improvements with Sea Avenue that they had made as part of their investments and bringing sewer up on, I guess, the west side of Sea uh up to uh eventually up to uh soccer facility up there. Um so sewer is just one aspect. It's it's one we look at a lot and talk about a lot, but just where the water's coming from, public public improvement such as roads. Yeah, that is, I mean, that is one that we could look at because we could service it, but that was under the existing agreement as well.
And they this agreement's only for ten years, you said?
Ten years from the date of adoption, yes.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, this is essentially, I mean, yeah, that Ryan just mentioned, this is essentially a renewal. The agreement does not change much other than to discuss those three or four items I discussed in the previous slide.
Okay. Steve.
So Dave, the line going up has, one, it has a little zigzag in it, but does the the line going further north towards the the star at the very top of that map? Is that based upon uh ownership of the properties or is that disregarded when we start looking at where the line is between Cedar Rapids and Marion? I mean, what determines where that line is?
Yeah, the line, the line uh mostly going north is just on Albernet Road, so it's a good natural barrier or not natural, but it's a good barrier to follow. Uh as we get down doing the the what we call the zigzag, um that's really just following uh if we had sewer extensions or that, that's kind of the peak of the hill and they both flow either side, either direction. It follows quarter section lines though, so while it may split, you may own both sides of the quarter section, but it follow, it doesn't split to the middle of that quarter section. So everything's on a quarter section. Uh all those lines reflect to a quarter section. Uh so again, it doesn't split a property owner's property in half beyond that section line.
So the zigzag is really based upon who can best service
Correct.
that particular area. That's why you've got the zigzag in there.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Is it quarter section or quarter quarter?
Quarter quarter. I said quarter section, I said quarter quarter. Forty acre increments.
Any other questions? Thanks for.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks for engaging in that discussion.
You're on, um.
Yes, oh, go ahead, one more question, Dave, sorry.
Dave, so, um, on this depiction, where is that star located that's Albernet Road and what?
Uh, it's about a mile north of White Pole Road, it's, it's, there's no other east-west, um, reference point, it's the Otter Creek Marion Township border.
Okay.
I, I don't have a good east-west connection, I don't have a good east-west reference point for you, other than a half mile north of White Pole Road.
Is, so that's north of County Home Road or south?
It's north of County Home Road.
White Pole Road is north of County Home.
Correct.
Okay.
County Home Road is, just for reference point, is, um, I'm going to call it the top zig. The top east-west zigzag there is where County Home Road is.
Who wants to bet Grant will be out looking for White Pole Road tomorrow? Or maybe even tonight, maybe even tonight. Okay.
I'll report back.
Any further discussion or questions for Dave? Thank you, Dave. All those in favor of, wait, have we made, yes, we have made it, all those in favor of resolution number three one nine five eight, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three one nine five nine approving Villa, Villa's Patio Central Corridor Review Regarding a Four Seasons and New West Deck Edition for Property Located at four, three, three, seventh Ave, Marion, Iowa, Martin Gardner Architecture.
Second.
I'm moved in seconded to approve resolution number three one nine five nine approving Villa's Patio Central Corridor Review Regarding the Four Seasons and New West Deck Edition for four thirty-three, Seventh Avenue, discussion. Just Steve.
Yeah, I think one of the questions on this, Dave, is I, do I remember correctly, and when I read this, one of the concerns when I started reading this was, are, how many parking spots are they going to lose because it's really tight in there? Did I actually read that, that they increased the parking spots by two?
That is correct. They go from 42 to 44 with the reconfiguration of the parking lot a little bit, but that redesign.
Yeah, that was one of the concerns I had when I started looking at this, and so I was really nice to see that change as well and making better use of the parking lot, but yeah, nice change, nice addition.
Okay. Any other questions or comments or discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution number three one nine five nine, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. The next item is a public forum, which is a time for comments from the public on any topic. Anyone here's, is here to address council, please come forward. Okay, seeing no one's coming forward, we will close this part of the hearing, proceed to council comments, start with Steve.
Uh, yeah, gonna be an exciting week next week, uh, Marion and Lynn Mar have their last day of school next Thursday on the 30th. The swimming pool opens up on the 27th, so summer is officially open for business in a week. Looking forward to it.
Nothing for me, your honor.
Nothing for me.
I do have things, so, um, first of all, just to side out, because I saw the release that's going out to our residents that it's time to start selecting their, um, waist receptacles, that the sizes that they're going to have. And I'm just really amazed at, um, the amount of thoughtfulness that has gone into being able to outreach to people and answer questions on this because I've seen this now all over, in all of our different events and what have you. I mean, it's been really, really out there for folks to be able to see, as want to see how tall it is, if it fits under the, you know, shelving and different things like that. And, um, so I really appreciate the time and effort that has gone into this by staff. The second thing I wanted to bring up is we will start in June, on June 8th is our first sunrise yoga event at Laug Park, year 11. So we're excited for that, we have a full list of instructors through the summer and lots of excited folks for that. But we also have added a new opportunity, um, along with Vella Yoga, and it's called Down Dogs in Uptown. And it is June 6th and June 20th from six to seven, and it's another free yoga opportunity for the community. So we are excited to be offering that in our uptown area, so we can join the parks on Saturday and, um, our uptown area for, for yoga on these Thursday evenings in June.
Well. Nothing.
Ready?
Nothing, thank you.
Uh, for my part, I just want to congratulate everyone who worked on the Arts Festival. It was really a wonderful event and I spent a few hours there. I intended to not be there that long, but I couldn't take two steps without one, without somebody stopping me and just commenting about how wonderful the festival was.
Sorry.
Yes?
Sorry, I was doing, I.
Oh, no. How, how, uh, you know, how much they love living in Marion, uh, if they were not from Marion, how much they were impressed with what Marion was doing. It was just, uh, just such a proud day to be able to just walk around and see everyone happy and, uh, and to hear, uh, all the compliments, uh, about the direction of our city and what, what we've been accomplishing. It's just a really fun time to be involved and to be part of this great team. So just, uh, had to share that, I was immensely proud, like I am every day and that, you know, I, I happened to go to Hy-Vee uh, day before that and, you know, again, I was, I couldn't leave Hy-Vee because every time I turned around, somebody was stopping me to share their comments and their, their, um, uh, satisfaction with what their city's doing. It doesn't mean we're perfect, it doesn't mean we don't have things to work on, but it means we're on the right direction and that people are noticing, people are happy with where they live and they see, um, the value that we're adding to their lives every day. And, uh, you know, we have tough decisions to make sometimes, but the, 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 the great part about that is, is none of these decisions are made lightly. None of them are, are made based on personal preference or personal opinion, they're all fact-based, expert-informed and well-founded decisions, and they're easy to explain, uh, to the public. And most people understand that when you give them facts and, and reasoning. And I think that's what's behind the level of trust that we've earned in our community and, um, the credibility that we're earning with the community. I only want to thank everyone, um, for, uh, whoever attended the, uh, famous last words last Friday night, uh, the, uh, quote-unquote roast, um, it was probably the most fun evening I've ever had, uh, and, uh, just appreciate everyone who attended and supported and helped to make it a record for the fundraising for that event, so. Uh, it was humbling and it was a tremendous, uh, tremendously funny event, so thank you to all who, who attended. I do have one more thing before this, uh, meeting, I was at the graduating, uh, grad, graduation ceremony for the Leadership in Action class that the chamber puts on. And they've now graduated about 150 people through that program. And, um, it's always fun for me to, um, get to speak with them at their graduation ceremony and encourage them to be, to join Team Marion and be part of, uh, uh, all the great things that are happening. That program is specifically designed to create future community leaders and, and grow the army of people who are supportive of the city's growth and, uh, prosperity and, and who have ideas and energy and, uh, talent to contribute to what's going on. And the bigger that we make Team Marion, the more successful, uh, we're likely to have because the greater pool of ideas and talent and energy, um, just becomes contagious. And, um, so, uh, I want to congratulate the chamber publicly for, uh, hosting that program, I think since 2011. So it's been going for a while and, um, it's been a great success because from that we get community volunteers and energized uh, city commission and, uh, committee members and, and, uh, and council members and.
And reach out to the chamber if you want to find people who might want to get involved.
Yeah, so that's right, if anybody knows people who would be good candidates for that class, please encourage them to uh, reach out to the chamber and apply for the next, next year's class, I think they fill up pretty quickly, but, um, it's, it's, it's a great opportunity, so. With that, thank you all for your hard work, have a great evening and have a great weekend, enjoy the holiday weekend. And congratulations to all the graduates from both high schools and colleges. Meetings adjourned.